This is the October 15th meeting of the Planning Board Subcommittee working on a proposed stormwater management ordinance for the town of Acton. And we had a to-do list that I just want to set aside for one minute while we chat with, hopefully, Bill if he can. If he can appear. And Jean Akil from Wilson Lake.
Wilson Lake.
And Linda Shire from AWOL. Can you share that with Bill, please? Evening, Bill.
Hi.
Thank you.
Is anybody here?
We're here.
No, no, no. You know, I just show up so that when these people show up.
This document is the one that we've been springing from in our recent edit of this work. This was drafted for us back in February of '12 by Forest Bell Associates. And we've set it aside initially because the board voted to have a ordinance that was integrated with the rest of the zoning ordinance. And since that time, when we went to town meeting with that work, we found we were not ready to hold up our end of the language. So we pulled back from town meeting and have come full circle and are working with this document again as the basis of our stormwater management ordinance. And Paul has been good enough to join us this time around and has worked up a draft, which I haven't got for you currently, but it's strongly based upon this language and the intent therein. But I was hopeful that you could share these with some other members of your Conservation Committee and just discuss it maybe sometime in the near future and give us a little feedback, would you? Okay. What I wanted to touch on briefly while our guests were here from AWOL and Wilson Lake was the notion that we have knocked around about whole-town inclusion, the applicability of this work, as initially proposed to be applicable nearly to Shoreland Zone, Commercial Resource Protection District, and Commercial B District, which is the little area down by the corner of Youngs Ridge Road and 109, where the 109 is proximate to the lake there, if you know what I'm saying. It's a very small strip of land, but it was zoned as having to be respectful of the proximity of the natural resource right there in terms of any commercial activity that goes on there. So what is going on there now with the dental hygienist clinic and/or what was there before with Bob Anderson's store is kind of the nature of what can go there.
It doesn't include the gravel pit?
It does not include the gravel pit. I shouldn't say that. It may on the other side of the street for a narrow little belt, but...
Probably not way into the back.
No, it looks like it's pretty much on the north side.
Yeah, it's just on the north side of 109.
Yeah.
So it would not include the gravel pit.
Yeah.
But in knocking this around, I don't think we've had or come to any consensus on it. One of the notions that early on I was hoping that we would fold into this was the idea that we might protect within the work that we would be submitting to the town in June of '14, the notion that we would be protecting first-order streams. But after talking to Linda and some other folks, listening to the board's notion of that, I've given that up or pulled back from that. But the notion of having this cover the whole town still, I think, has some sense to it. And I'd just like to quickly walk through those talking points. And if we want to knock it around for half an hour, 20 minutes, that's all I kind of allowed for our shared meeting with the Conservation Committee today because we have some other stuff we have to get through from previous meeting. The first point I came up with was it would be more equitable and straightforward, particularly in an approach to roads. Roads would include all roads, not just the roads in the Shoreland Zone existing in or proposed. Point two would be that it addresses the actual impacts to the resource and is more inclusive of actual problems, i.e., you're not just concentrating on camp roads. You're dealing with all the roads in town, which they do contribute to sediment loading through our existing stormwater management, ditches, et cetera, on the roadside. The third point I thought was that it supports similar work on shared lakes and watersheds with Wakefield, particularly, and Milton, particularly Great East Lake, Horn Pond, and with Milton, it would be the Milton Three Ponds area. And the fourth one is that it builds support and sensibility in the future for the protection with a buffer for first-order streams. The notion being that... And Gavin and I worked on a little map if somebody has any time afterwards where all of those little tags, there's no differentiation between the color in terms of what they represent. They're just tags are tags. They denote first-order streams in the town. And we came up with somewhat of an astounding number of, a total of 60, first-order streams that impact 184 lots in the whole town. There's 3,025 lots, so this is a small number of lots that are impacted. And there are 11 streams that flow indirectly without going into a wetland or anything first, 11 streams that flow directly into a great pond. So it's an issue that is not ripe, I don't think, currently, but I think at some time in the future we ought to consider it as something that is protected, ought to be protected. Jean, you know what first-order streams?
Yes, I did get a list.
So that was all I had to contribute on that point. I just wanted to try and put that out there for Linda and Jean to give us some feedback on, and Bill. And if you wanted to, I'll share this with Gavin and you can maybe make a note of some of these and relate to your committee. So I have nothing more on that particular point, if anyone...
Can I ask if anybody else on the committee has other thoughts on this, what the discussion has been?
The ordinance doesn't address roads so far.
Well, that was a biggie as Tom was talking, a couple of the bullet points talking about roads.
What the F is it?
As far as I know, this has nothing to do with roads or the ditches off of the roads.
Driveways, yes.
But, you know, as opposed to private property. Private property, yes.
Right.
Town property, no. Or state property, no.
The notion would be that a rising tide floats all boats. If you have the sensibility in the private property realm that our driveways, et cetera, need to be respectful of proximate water resources, I would think, I would hope that the town would follow suit.
Well, I don't think there's any argument that the roads absolutely are quite, I don't know about probably, but quite possibly a larger nut to crack in terms of infiltration of contaminants into the watersheds than what this ordinance addresses now. But are you proposing that we add that language to this at this time?
No.
Or are you sort of extrapolating on a future ordinance for non-private properties?
No. It goes back to the notion that, I mean, driveways and private roads, our work would be impacting driveways. I understand that. And nothing more, not our town roads. But as you implement best management practices down to the foot of your driveway as it impinges upon a private way or a townway, that sensibility, I think, would do nothing but improve the situation downstream, if you want to call it that.
So we have a definition of the problem, but do we have a proposed solution at this time?
We could stop digging the damn ditches. I've got to tell you that they're not very popular with anybody on the committee, those ditches down the side of the road, aside from that they're going to get somebody killed for sure.
The big riprap ditches.
Yeah, they move a lot of water to places that it shouldn't go.
Yeah.
I mean, it may stop the roads from washing out in places, but they're as big a problem as the one they solve.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I agree with that.
I'm not sure I would either.
I mean, the water is running down those sides of the road, and until the riprap was there, it's just taking the sediment and dumping it wherever it goes. And they're slowing that down and then capturing the water that's cleaner at the bottom and then filtering it out. That's, I mean, you know, we've been working a lot with the UNH Stormwater Center, and that is exactly what they recommend, to mitigate the sedimentation that's causing the pollution. So I'm not sure I agree with that.
Well, it does kind of channel the water and create more of a flow if there were lots of small areas where the water is...
Well, I don't know. You drive around and see the ones that aren't ditched. The channel is happening all by itself, but it's taking the dirt with it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it happens anyway, yeah. But if we had some kind of practice that would send the water off the road into a little dry well or something to slow it down, you know, intermittently along the road as opposed to just channel it the full length.
Putting more check dams in.
Yeah, and some sort of practices along the hill as opposed to just trying to fix it at the bottom, you know what I mean?
Then you get into private, you know, private property, channel the roadway.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, compared with the roads that you see that don't have that rip wrapping, I mean, you know, that's what we've done over on Brackett Road. And yes, we have a lot of check dams and, you know, shorter distances, but it's made a huge difference. I mean, I think we've slowed down 12 tons of sediment over there. So, you know, that rip wrapping and channeling is what is being recommended right now by the Stormwater Center.
And I would agree that the ditching on Youngs Ridge Road, near where Wilson Lake there by the dam and all, you can see after the storms how much sediment is being trapped and not moving forward. And one of my concerns then becomes, okay, now, as it gets full, we have to clean them out. It's doing its job. It's preventing that sediment from getting down into the streams and the lakes, but we have to continue to maintain them.
Right, the ones on Brackett Road that are, it's a town road, and the town actually did the work. But they got put in a year ago, and they have, you know, they've had to come and suck it out and do it all, which they have a, you know, committed maintenance plan to do. But, you know, that is the current science of how to slow that sedimentation down. As far as the driving off the road piece, another story.
Because I've got to say, I've never really seen anything like that, other than like in the Canadian Midwest where they put snow on them.
Yeah, they're going in around.
Linda, would you just address the perception that Paul was speaking of, the notion that our roads, what is the equation that you are aware of that exists maybe between roads in Pickle Watershed versus point, non-point source pollution from, you know, camps?
You mean percentage-wise, or?
Yeah, well, I mean, we have...
I don't have that information. I mean, you know, they're both significant. There's no doubt about that. But I guess I'm confused about the road thing, too, because I don't read that in here, so I'm not sure that has to do with this discussion.
I should have said roads and driveways. The notion that you're going to solve the problem down to the foot of your driveway is, it's a little, it has the same sensibility or nonsensibility as starting stream protection in a second-order stream.
You can design driveways that don't shed the way some do. I mean, some people just use the original cut they make to get up to the platform. They want to clear the, you know, and that's not, shouldn't be a driveway. A driveway should be designed with proper drainage, but that's...
I understand that we're not concerned about roads, but I'm just suggesting to you that if we do a good job on this and we can educate the public in a couple of public meetings that this is a rational bit of work to move forward with, I think it is all to the good in terms of maybe how our town roads, private and public roads, start to be, you know, upgraded.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, this is my personal feeling here, but I think there's two different things happening here. Sort of the theoretical, what is the best practice for the planet, you know, for how we all leave our mark on the planet and how we all use land? And then what is legislation that is reasonable, that's going to have enough political will to get it carried through and is going to be possible for your code enforcement officer or your volunteers or whoever it is to legislate? So, I mean, I think that conversation is important, and, you know, that's what we do when we do these forums, is we talk about roads and land use and all that. But that's a very different discussion then. What can you get put on your books?
Right, right.
And what can you legislate? And what can you enforce?
And I bring these points up merely to, as talking points, for the notion, to give some sense to the notion of whole-town inclusion, all zones on this go-around versus just the three zones that have initially been considered.
I have one question. You said something about support similar efforts in neighboring towns. What does that mean? Because Wakefield is their current one is Shoreland Zone only.
Right. So if we take another step forward with that, with the awareness that we do have shared watersheds and shared lakes, that's all to the good. I mean, there has to be some moving forward with this notion of this work. To be continually going back to town meeting year after year after year with incremental improvements, my own sense is, I think, if we do our job correctly and do some good education with this work, those installment plan, resource protection does not have to be, we can take larger steps. Our stairway risers can be a little taller there, and the treads can be a little longer. We don't have to...
I think that's what you, as a committee, and more than the committee, have to figure out, is, you know, what is that threshold that you can go to? Because, you know, my personal feeling is that a small step that succeeds is a whole lot more effective and a much better outreach tool than a large step that fails.
Well, let me pose this question to you then. Would you think it makes better, I don't know, I don't like to use the word political sensibility, but planning sensibility in terms of incremental steps? If we were to stay with the threshold that we have now with the three zones and then in a successive year say, let's do this for the whole town? I mean, how slow do we have to go?
I think that, you know, that's a call that you guys have to make. But what I can say is that, you know, when we did our watershed management plan for the Salmon Falls headwaters, which was Great East and Wilson and Lovell and Horn and Ivanhoe, that involved doing watershed surveys where we literally walked every site in the watershed. And I will tell you that very, very, very few of the impacts happened outside of your zones, outside of these zones, is that that's really where the impacts are happening. So if you want to have the most direct, most effective water quality protection right now, I would say stick here and get people accustomed to that. And then, you know, if you feel that over time you're still having impacts that you're not controlling, then, you know, go after them. But, you know, Wakefield's had the same discussion, and they've sort of come back to the same thing, is really, you really look at where the problems are occurring, it is in those zones when you're talking about water quality. You know, that's...
Well, that's why I need this to be back.
Sorry, it's honest feedback. But it's just, you know, and a lot of this is just personal opinion of having been at a lot of these meetings and seeing pushback and seeing what people are really concerned about, and then knowing where the actual impacts are really happening, and they really are happening right next to the water. And, you know, yes, the larger streams, and yeah, you do have all those first-order streams, but, you know, how much, I mean, if you were to measure the pollution that's happening from those compared to what you might be able to control if you got this on the books right away?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a lot more powerful.
Maybe I am a little hung up on the first-order stream business. Not maybe, I am hung up on the first-order stream. And I saw the notion of, or I was thinking of the notion of all-zone inclusion as being a natural stepping stone to saying in 2015 or '16, there's a piece of the resource that's not, you know, being addressed, and let's consider protecting it.
I don't disagree with you, but I'm just, my, you know, thing is get as much bang for the buck as you can and protect those things that we know are easily identifiable as water quality problems. Focus on those. You know, pick the low-hanging fruit and get it. And then, when you solve that problem...
Yeah.
Then you tackle the next one. But, you know, you've got, this gives you an awful lot, this gives Kenny an awful lot to do, just in those three zones.
We were, well, okay. Talk about that a little bit, will you? We didn't see this as being that, we do have to support Kenny's, and he was looking for this already, I think, he's spoken of this, I think, to the Planning Board. He was looking for an expanded number of hours to do his job. And maybe that's something that is part and parcel of moving this forward, is supporting Kenny when he goes back in front of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to adequately implement this.
Well, I mean, I can't speak to how many hours that will take, you know, that's, but I guess my point of saying there's a lot to do here is because that's where most of your activity is happening that is going to impact water quality.
Right.
And so just managing those three zones is probably, you know, a fair amount of work. I don't know, I mean, I don't think that what has been put down here is particularly difficult to do. I mean, I think, you know, you're not asking people to do, you know, really difficult things that are going to take a lot of management on his part, but...
We have, and we have spoken about how the implementation of this, which was going to involve some, I honestly can't remember.
Enforcement, follow-up, some of them into perpetuity.
But we had a notion of how we were going to finance that, and that eludes me right now.
And what were the numbers?
They rely on AWOL and the Youth Conservation Corps for some stuff, and other stuff, more mechanic stuff, I think you're going to have, we haven't figured it out yet, but he talked about doing something along the lines of what septic companies do, which is whoever installs, if it's an active system with something that's got to be maintained year-round or checked, then the company's got to do the notifying.
Yeah.
They notify the town if they have, if the owner hasn't asked them to perform the task within a month after they were supposed to or something.
I can't remember the details, but it made sense. It's something, it's a system that's already used with septic.
Yeah. Hire someone to do it.
And what were the numbers that you had there for the three zones? 300 and some odd properties versus over 1,000?
No, no, that's just first order.
Or is that first order?
I got you.
Yeah. Because that's, I mean, I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to figure out that it's going to take a lot more administrative work to do this for all the properties in the town as opposed to three properties that are near water, basically. You know, how much more, you know, I'm, we don't have the ratios at this particular moment, but to me, it makes more sense to iron out the kinks on a lower-impact basis, see what works, see what doesn't work, refine, and then, okay, if it's working and it doesn't seem too painful to expand that, then do so. But I think you made some good points regarding low-hanging fruit, and the smaller project that can be voted in is much better than the more ambitious one that is refused. Do you have any thoughts?
No, but I agree with what Linda has said then. I think the climate in the town would be more receptive and easier to educate the people if you take a smaller chunk and start with that that has a large impact. Just giving people on our leg alone to take responsibility for the impact that they're having has taken quite a few years, and they're starting to get it. But it's still quite a bit of resistance.
Well, and I think, you know, some of the stuff of the way that we've worked is, you know, by doing demonstration projects and by doing these road projects and showing that it's doable and, you know, that it's not that cumbersome and, you know, rather than saying to the town, okay, trust us, this is going to be great for everybody, put it in, start putting in some things and show people what it looks like, and then, you know, it's not so scary. And guess what? We are measuring tons and tons of pollution reduction. Okay, this is a good thing. But, you know, rather than coming in with the hammer, come in with the carrot and say, you know, watch, this works.
Well, that's what we needed here tonight, I guess. You're, I promised the folks that this would just be a half an hour shared meeting, so you're more than welcome to stick with us and see what we're up to here.
Lee is a long way away, so...
No obligation.
...to go.
We sit and bicker, and then there's long periods of silence, and we'll sit.
And occasional head-cracking.
You can do that.
Well, you know, I mean, I just, I have to just go by my gut here. I'm not a planner. I, you know, I, you know, I can't say that Formula A works better than Formula B. It's just what my gut says.
We, I in particular needed some more feedback on this, so I'm glad you folks came.
Thank you for coming all this way.
Would you, and when you have a chance in the next month or so, just kind of look this, you've seen this draft before.
I have the original one. I haven't seen the one that Paul's been working on.
Right.
It's not finished.
Well, that's one that we've been working on for several sessions.
Yeah. I've seen the one that got thrown out, and I've seen the original one, but I haven't seen the...
It's really just attempting to clarify intent is the long and the short of it, you know, just sort of arguing over seeming minutia, because better now than during a public hearing or after the fact.
Right.
Because, I mean, that's what, a lot of that is what shot down the thing that, you know, went through in the spring, is just, you know, oh, gee, well, it's a good idea, it's a noble idea, but how about this and this and this and this? And we don't, you know.
And how do you do it?
It's best if you're going to have to go through all that work to not have those questions, to actually have worked through them beforehand. And that's what we're trying to do. Whether we will succeed or not is another question.
Well, and when it comes to, you know, outreach, I mean, we're here, and we are very happy to participate in that and, you know, do what we can, so let us know.
Just, one of the things that was encouraging my interest in the notion of expansion was Derek from PREP. And we have gone to one meeting, well, the meeting that you were at with, what was that gentleman's name?
Jeff Dennis there.
Jeff.
Oh, right.
And, yeah, he encouraged us to do the whole town because of the roads and wherever there's going to be road construction done, that's where you want the...
This...
There's the theoretical science behind it. I mean, Jeff is an absolute pure scientist.
Oh, yeah, we found that out, yeah.
You know, that's how he thinks. And, you know, he's an amazing scientist, and I love listening and learning from him. and I love listening and learning from him.
A little pragmatism thrown in maybe?
Okay, well, anyway.
All good goals.
Thank you.
In time.
And, and please share your thinking about the, the draft, uh, and, and we'll share as we move forward with a, with a draft that might be going to a planning board, um, we'll, we'll share that with you.
So we can, we can take these and go through them.
Yeah.
Become familiar. Great, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll see you guys around.
I hope everybody appreciates.
Well, that's another question. We'll see about that.
Pulling this water.
Have a good night.
Night.
Um, we had for homework to, to discuss three or four points that were, um, on the, uh.
Do we still have all four copies of this draft V two or did something, or did one of them just walk out the door? I know you have a copy.
Yeah, you gave me one of them.
I'm not sure if you have a copy yet or not, um.
I have one.
Be draft V two.
Yeah.
Now, this was something you brought new today?
Draft V two, yes.
I didn't get one.
Well, presumably it just walked out the door.
It was probably on your, on the table, it was on the table, it was probably under your stuff.
Well, no, it probably made its way over there.
I have one on.
Right.
Well.
And you have one.
Let me get that.
Yeah.
I can get it. It was just, how many pages was it? How many pages was it?
How many pages? It's like fifteen, six, uh, fourteen.
She just thought she could take it.
Yeah, well, I didn't know what she had.
Right, it could have just been this proposed stormwater management ordinance thing, that's what was on top, I think, but.
Does everybody else have a copy?
Yeah, I think so.
Can we just go over the points that were, that were, um, homework for, uh, from the end of the last meeting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going over Jess's.
Okay.
Stuff now. What, what did you want to discuss first?
This was the first one.
Okay.
Thank you, Jess.
The pictures are all there, it's not from the document.
Oh, so that's not intended to be part of the document? So on my copy, I, um, I un-underlined anything that I did not change from the copy we started with a forest bell, cause the, the copy of forest bell that we started with had some underlines because of multiple generations of that. So to have, hopefully reduce confusion, I have, I have removed the underlines that were started, that originally were in, in the bell document we picked up and the underlines you see left and the crossouts are changes since forest, the, the last copy of forest that we picked up. And I took a stab at all the points of contention that we had last time around. And in a perfect world, everybody would say, oh, yeah, that's great, but I assume that that won't happen. But at least brings us to the next point of the discussion. Oh, the two definitions you're saying, why does it have to be one or the other?
I don't think it does, we could incorporate more of what you brought to the table into this one.
Some decks and patios.
Oh, you're on applicability there.
Yeah.
I'm still looking at disconnected impervious.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to do a disconnected impervious cover first? Just look at that one.
I knew what the other one said.
Yeah, you can wait to yell at me.
I think it's just a matter.
Well, easy to with the definition.
Well, and keep in mind, keep in mind that, that in, in, in none of this, I am, am I attempting to change what is intended. What I'm trying to do, and in some cases, I think in that section that you're talking about, I'm trying to be sort of extreme in, in saying, this is how I interpret what I think we talked about last time and what the author intended. And I understand that even, even that, even what I ended up with, I'm not totally happy with, but I'm happier than with what we were discussing last week. So I, I think we'll, we'll get to that and we'll, we'll thrash that out, but, uh, Mr., Mr. Chairman, where do you want to go here?
Well, let's start with, with, uh, disconnected impervious cover.
And that would be page, top of page two. So I can't say I argue with, with the, the new definition that just came up when that, now is that, was that coming from somewhere or?
It's kind of another law.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's someone else's writing.
I mean, it, it's, it seems clear enough. Um, can't throw any stones at it, which is a good start.
Jess, what about the notion of the, the threshold of designed and capture and filtrate the precipitation from one inch 24 hour rain event?
What were you asking?
Well, what's in the old definition?
Oh.
Do we want to leave that in the definition or not?
Well, I tossed it as well.
I just think it's confusing and I think it's putting, I mean, what if you get three inches or, I, you know, I mean, I just think when you start putting numbers in that are only arbitrary, that it doesn't really, it doesn't affect the, the definition of disconnected. Disconnected means that you've taken this piece and you've made sure that all the water from this place is going over here, period. It doesn't, you know.
So what I ended up doing is I started with the definition with the omission of the one inch 24 hour rain event and then I added a clause or a variation on a clause that was from good old section 2 dot 1, 3, which is the thing that gave me this Satori moment originally about what in heck that was talking about. So I then combined them, it would, you know, and I, and I think now that definition is better than it was and, you know, it remains to be seen, you know, which of these two most succinctly conveys what the board would like conveyed to the reader. I would say both from a, from a informative standpoint and from a stone throwing standpoint would be, you know, both reasonable alternatives.
Can, can we, uh, now that we have two or three options in front of us, can we, can we table that until the 29th and we'll, we'll decide on the one we, we want to go with there?
What's the 29th?
Our next meeting.
Ah, okay, didn't know that.
Rather than trying to chew that up and, um, come up with a, a solution tonight.
All right, what's next?
I just see we, we, we do a lot of, um.
Thrashing?
Yes.
I think we should try and meld the two together if we feel like it or just not worry about it and.
You mean the, both the definitions?
Yeah. I mean, cause you seem like you'd like your definition and you'd seem like you might prefer your definition.
Yeah, but if you stack them together, it's just too many words, more words than meaning.
Well, it wouldn't happen.
I'd add something twice.
Okay, so we pick one of the two, as you're saying.
Or a variation thereup, but it shouldn't be a lot of words.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
To define disconnected twice by.
Oh, no, 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 that, I wasn't, I wasn't saying double it, I was saying combine.
This one is affecting disconnected, it's kind of one of those purity things.
All right, well, we'll see what happens on the 29th.
Well, I was thinking of that, but, but, but in fact, the fact, the fact that it's not there, you know, I mean, it was, what was getting me and originally is disconnected, you know, what do you mean disconnected? Um, well, and actually, yeah, that's using the word as well, but, but, yeah, whatever. I mean, I, I certainly won't be insulted if, if you want to go with, you know, one over the other. I mean, it's, it's up to the, it's up to the board as far as I'm concerned, but I think these are both reasonable and they're both better than what we started with and I think they both do the trick, so whatever shoots, you know, whatever floats your boat.
I, just, just throw out a, a third thing to consider, your notion of, um, uh, pulling in the thinking from page, um, six, uh, which is 2.13.
213, yeah. And in fact, I didn't exactly quote it, so, so, you know, I'm not detracting from the importance and the informativeness of where I, where I effectively stole, um, variation of that phrase, cause that one said, okay, so the thing I took says, were the result of effectively disconnecting that impervious cover from the stormwater drainage network and what I took it from says, impervious cover should be disconnected from the stormwater drainage network through such techniques as infiltration sheet flow over impervious area or other approved LID techniques. So, I mean, they both have value and, and in fact, if you want to go with this other definition as well, I mean, parts of this, we are already stating elsewhere in this document, so, you know, whatever works.
That second citation, uh, what page is that on?
The, the second one that I read?
Yeah.
Um, I thought, yeah, it was on six, I.
Page six at the top.
Yeah, uh, near the top, item three. It's like this third paragraph down, impervious cover should be, right here.
Okay. I, I, I was, in, in my draft of that, uh, or proposal for that, I just stuck that sentence right on the end of, of something, uh, very similar to what Jen Jesperson had initially.
You, you mean on the, into the definition?
Yeah, yeah, just as an expansion of the.
Yeah, so I mean, I essentially stole parts of it, you know, the part that, that really made a difference, in my opinion, of, of the definition. But as long as it's conveyed, you know, you can kind of weigh all the factors in your head about what makes this unique, a unique kind of impervious cover and why the word disconnected matters, um, I think both of these definitions would do a decent job of that.
Okay. Um, the next one was good old 213.
And we're not missing anything, okay, keep on trucking. So two.
What is the draft you're working on?
I'm right now looking at draft V two that I printed off today after making some changes, after applying our discussions last week and attempting to curtail a revisit of those discussions.
Okay. Um, does that involve the notion of, of, uh?
And when we get to.
Times, let me ask a question.
This thing here, we can talk about that too.
Does that involve the notion still of, um, changing the order of appearance of, um?
No, the trigger thing that I brought in last week is tossed, cause it, you know, I ran it up the flagpole and it got a bit of a.
Okay.
A treatment, shall we say.
Okay, good.
Which was not a salutation.
I didn't realize there was a consensus on that, but if, if you took that to be the case, that, that's probably.
Um, uh, I didn't get a warm and fuzzy reception, I don't think.
All right.
So I reading the writing between the wall or on the wall, I.
Between the walls, yeah.
Between the walls, I tossed it.
That is.
Okay, um, so to our favorite, favorite citation of applicability, 213.
Okay, um, applicability, okay, so at the top of this, I think we had already agreed that it, you know, right now, it was saying per the town of act and land use chart, so now it says as permitted by the town of act and land use chart, and I think that's clearer about what it means. I don't think we had a disagreement on that. All right, um, so, and this has gone back to the original phraseology, um, just tacking the 525 two in front of the section that it's talking about. And where the, the significant discussion was, was on what is meant by two. So what you see in front of you is what I think it means, um, and I can explain if, if you see fit, um, why it's still imperfect, even if you agree with what it says, but. So now two says new or expansion of decks, okay, so first of all, this first thing has to do with, with structures. We're adding structures or maintaining a structure that will increase, increase the impervious area of the property that meets the threshold of disturbances within the three zones, not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit. So, and, and it's worth pointing out, if we go to, down to section, um, 525 243, if you'd be so kind.
Page.
525 243, top of page 13. So this is where it talks about decks and patios and retaining walls. I took the liberty of basically eliminating a section of here that kept bopping out of it, if it, if it hit clause one, it was always bopping out of here. And so now if it hits clause one, hey, maybe I have a deck and maybe I have a patio too and I'm not deliberately bypassing this section under those circumstances. So when we come down here, for whatever reason, it says new or expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures or impervious areas within zones listed in A to C in section 525 231 shall meet the following requirements. So regardless of whether it's part of or not part of a new structure or building expansion, if we get down here because we've coming through the main part of this thing, or if we just happen to get here because we were referred to it from two, that's why we're hitting it. Now, if in fact, you intend that if we have a structure going on and we're, we're dealing with a structure and we're doing, uh, levels of disturbance and we're doing paper. a structure, and we're doing levels of disturbance, and we're doing paperwork and all of that, if it is truly intended that under those circumstances, we do not look at this deck and patio and retaining wall and accessory structure stuff, then what I have done here is incorrect, and you want to put all those firewalls back so that it only hits here when we want it to hit here if it's invoked in two and not one. But it didn't make sense to me.
This doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I'm confused.
I think I have to take it home, because I, it doesn't, what you're being is even more absolutist than you were being before. Now, how do we manage decks, patios, retaining walls at all? Because now they're neither part of the project, or now they're never gonna...
If they're part of the project...
Go into five point one-five.
Okay, so if they're part of a housing project, you know, say there's a house involved, there's a new house.
Which, you're on page thirteen, or are you on page four?
Well, we're sort of talking about four and thirteen.
You're on page, I know, well, I was just wondering if, yeah, okay, well, I'll stick with four, okay.
So, all right, let's try to do this. Say we have a new house, and the new house has a deck. Yes?
Sure.
Okay, and it has a driveway, it's got a paved driveway, so that increases the impervious area, right? And it triggers one. Let's just say?
Yeah.
So we've triggered one, and we say, okay, we don't have an exclusion, we're going to do the levels of disturbance, and say it falls into one of these two levels of disturbance, and I don't really care which one.
Right.
Okay? So it comes in here, and we're slogging through this thing, and with the old style, when it hit thirteen, we'd say, oh, let's see, newer expansion of decks, da-da-da-da, accessory structure, not part of the development of a new primary structure. Hmm. Well, it isn't not part of a new primary structure, it is in fact part of one, so I guess we're not going to do this. Originally...
I don't know what you just said. We're not going to do what?
The guidelines of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures.
They're not going to go to section...
We're not going to do that, because at the top of this section, it says, oh, don't only do this if it's part of a house, if you came here because of clause one. Oh, excuse me, not part of the development of a new primary structure. Okay. Only do this if you came in here through clause two, excuse me, is what this is actually saying. It's sort of a repeat of clause two, and it's saying, hmm, if I come here and I'm not part of the development of a new primary structure, because I come in here through clause two, now I'm going to do this. But if I come in here through clause one, which means I am part of the new primary structure or building expansion, if that is true, and I'm coming here in one, I'm not going to do this, originally. That's what this said. So I'm thinking, well, gee, if I have a new house, are we deliberately, and maybe we are, and if so, great, but what now, what the original phraseology is saying, if I have a house with a deck, then I'm going to do all this stuff, levels of disturbance for the house, and I'm never going to hit this clause on page thirteen for the decks and retaining walls and all of that stuff, because it's part of the house. That's all I'm saying.
Because the applicant doesn't necessarily think they're going to be applicable in one and two, they just say, oh, I'm one, and go with it.
Well, if one applies...
But some applicants could look on and say, oh, I'm applicable in two as well.
If one applies, then we're not going to come in here and do the deck and the patio and retaining wall, and that project may well have a deck and a patio and a retaining wall.
But they could, they could, it has to do with the applicant, right?
So they'll probably be doing them anyway, I mean, because they're not...
And that's, okay, and that's fine, if that's the consensus...
I thought we were...
If it'll be adequate to not mention these under the projects where it's incidental or non-incidental, and it's handled somehow by the other stuff happening, and, you know, we're not going to hit this, and we know we're not going to hit this, and there's not a problem with that, as far as the board is concerned, okay, but, you know, the reason that I'm making these changes and pointing these out is that...
I'm confused about the numbering, maybe.
Okay.
Section two point two-five-two. So we're in section two-five-two, and now you're saying that you're not required to meet other requirements.
Well, and again, again, this is...
I think it's just the sentence is just...
Okay, and that's, that's fine, I can go...
More than anything.
Don't be too worried about the phraseology, because obviously that can change, but I guess it's the thought, okay? So, say I don't hit one, I don't have a house, and I'm not expanding or building a house, say, or a structure, okay, so one doesn't apply, and now I'm coming down to two, and I'm saying, okay, newer expansion of decks, blah, 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 not part of the development of a new structure, okay, listed in AC, and just forget about all the underlying stuff, okay, listed in AC above, shall meet requirements in five twenty-five-two four-three, and that's what it said before. Ignore the underlying stuff for the moment. So, a couple of problems with just the way it was phrased before. Shall meet requirements at five twenty-five-two four-three, but it was unclear what happens beyond that. Does the, do the exclusions count? Does the levels of disturbance count? You know, do I keep falling through this thing?
Well, it depends on their scale of their...
Does it?
What they're doing.
Does it, in number two?
It depends on the scale of their disturbance, I think it still does.
Well, we're talking about thresholds of disturbance in one, but we're not talking about thresholds of disturbance in two.
Well, we need to make it so it's clear for everyone that we are.
I agree, and I guess I'm trying to just force discussion, to say, these are the inconsistencies here. Now, the other thing that was kind of weird is, if you're looking at one, and say it is a structure, you know, expansion of is this in structure, and it doesn't meet the threshold of disturbance, okay?
It's less than five hundred square feet.
Yeah, so one doesn't apply. So we, one doesn't apply just because of the threshold, it doesn't match, but it is a house.
Okay.
Okay? Now I'm going to come down to two, and I'm going to say, hmm, let's see, newer expansion, not part of the development of a new structure or a building. Oh, well, it is part of the development of a new structure, so we're not going to do five twenty-five-two four-three. So we haven't triggered on one, and we haven't done two because it also involves a structure. So we've gotten out of both sets of these things, even though we have a house, and granted, it's below the threshold, but we also have a deck and a retaining wall. And so nothing in this section has been invoked because of the way this is current, without the underlying stuff, the way it's currently phrased.
It will not disturb under five hundred square feet, that's twenty by thirty.
Your hypothetical doesn't hold water.
Why doesn't it hold water?
Because it's an impossible scenario.
How is it an impossible scenario, that I would have a deck?
It's a house and a deck, and it doesn't trigger any level of disturbance?
Well, look at, look at the disturbance.
Twenty by twenty-five is five hundred.
Oh, excuse me, well, okay, so maybe you're not building a house, maybe you're doing an expansion of a house, maybe you're doing, you're rebuilding something that requires a building permit, and it's not going to increase the footprint. But I'm putting a deck on.
Then you're increasing the footprint.
I'm not increasing the pervious footprint, excuse me, the impervious area.
Well, it counts for the setback, a deck counts as the footprint, because it counts in the setback of the house.
Okay, and so what, greater than two thousand square, oh, well, okay, so let's just say we're not, I could see that we're not doing greater than two thousand square feet, on slopes greater than fifteen, okay, so we're talking non-incidental, greater than two thousand square feet on slopes greater than fifteen percent, or greater than fifteen, ten thousand square feet on slopes less than or equal to fifteen percent. So say, you know, say I have a relatively flat piece of property, less, slopes less than, I could have up to, I could have up to ten thousand square feet. But I guess the bottom line here is that there may well be cases where things are going to squeak by, and I guess, what do you intend to happen between the relationship of one and two? If one gets triggered but not two, if two gets triggered but not one, if both get triggered, what should happen? That's all I'm asking. And the words can be couched accordingly.
There's standards to go by.
I think if you merely plug in, and I'm not going to say this again, if you merely plug in...
Thank God.
...the clause from number one, the third line, if it meets the threshold level of disturbance as delineated in five two-five-two one five.
Yep.
If you drop that phrase between the third line in number two, between the word above and shall, I think that would take care of it. So, I'm not going to read it out, because I've said it too many times.
Okay, so now we are in fact, and I know that you did mention this last time around, do you care about the whole, how about the, should we also add the is not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit?
No.
Okay, so, if it meets the threshold, the level of disturbance is delineated in section five twenty-five-two one five. And that's going to go above. Shall meet requirement, okay, shall meet requirement, and in, obviously, the rest of that shall not require to meet other requirements. So apparently, we are required to meet other requirements, under conditions under which, I can't get rid of that. Shall meet requirements in five twenty-five-two four-three. Okay, so we know we want to meet five twenty-five-two four-three. No argument there, no discussion there, I think that's clear. Are we looking at exclusions? Are we looking at levels of disturbance? Are we generating any paperwork? Are we doing the rest of this?
I can't, we can't answer that. I can't answer that.
If you can't answer that, and you're putting this forth, how do you know how that's going to be interpreted?
Because it's going to be interpreted, no matter how we interpret it, this is maybe an important point to make, whatever sensibility that the planning board and Kenny Paul makes of this thing, is the way it will be implemented vis-à-vis an applicant.
And that's not sensible, Tom.
It needs to be clear to them.
Absolutely, I, no, I'm not...
And it shouldn't be subject to the vagaries of who's interpreting it, I mean, it should be clear enough to...
Absolutely.
To interpret one way. What is that way?
Well, you're asking us for an interpretation of some words that are on the page. They mean what they, what they state. I don't understand, why, why do we have to keep trying to contort this language to, so as to wring it out of any, I understand there shouldn't be inconsistencies...
Tom, if I'm asking...
Wait, let me finish my thought. There shouldn't be inconsistencies, and there should be a logical flow of activity that stems from the language for the project that the applicant brings in.
We're creating, we're just not getting there. Maybe that's what we need, Tom.
Well, we're...
The problem is, okay, let me see if I can try and clear, and get my hands around it. The problem is that if you read it, you're not clear when you're reading one, if it counts, if decks and patios and retaining walls are part of one, because retaining wall might not be attached to a house, it might be down a hill. And so it's unclear whether, there's two cases for two. One is where two is part of one, and it's inclusive, and whatever the total disturbance is, is the total disturbance from putting it all in in one fell swoop, or you're just adding a patio, or a retaining wall, or a patio and a retaining wall, as separate, which is separate from building the house. Now, when you get to that point, two things can happen. One, you could be building a structure that will still trigger once somehow, it would be hard, because it would be big, but if you're building a mansion, I suppose, you could end up with a patio...
A hundred square feet of impervious, I mean...
A hundred square feet of impervious, plus, no, plus the five hundred square feet of the rest of it. So, or, you might not be triggering that, because it might be hard to get to a hundred feet impervious and a five hundred minimum square foot disturbance. So whichever way that goes, it's going to either trigger an incidental, I mean, a non-incidental probably, and, or it's going to just skip directly to five point two-five point two point four-three, and then live up to whatever standards is there. So there are, two generates two paths, and that is the problem. We just haven't written it so that there's two paths yet.
The way you were explaining it...
We just break it into A and B, and we'd be fine.
The way you explained it there is the way I've been understanding it.
Right, but your wording, the wording word have, it doesn't say it that way.
I think it does. I think it, does it...
But Paul doesn't, and...
If I ask the planning board to explain, you know, separately, to explain what this does, I am fairly certain I'm going to get at least a couple of different answers, and if that's the case, this is not ready for primetime.
Well, then, we're just going to let Jess explain to the planning board, as she just did, what it means, because, agreed, the language does have to be, we have to reach consensus on what the language means, I agree that, with that. Nobody, you take ten people and they could read anything.
No, that's not true, see, that is not true. I have, I have, I have scored national tests, and I know that you can put seventy people in a room, and you can get most of them to interpret the same, different answers, based, you know, on a scale that you all agree on. So I know that people can understand each other on large scales if things are clear.
So, looking at page thirteen...
I don't know how, I guess...
It's hard to do, but it can be done.
My answer would be, I don't know how to make this any clearer than it already is, other than the inclusion of that.
I think you should be broken down into two sections.
Okay, so thirteen, top of thirteen, the way it was originally written...
You're in the October fifteenth...
Top of thirteen of the one that, of October fifteen, okay? The way it was originally written, it was very clear, and let's start with something that's very clear, it was very clear that it was not intended to be executed, let's see, that not part of the development of a new structure shall meet, okay? So, it is not intended to be executed, and sorry for the programming analogy, but that's the way I look at this, and it's a little easier to figure it out, it's not intended to be executed out of clause one. So if we're in this document for clause one, okay, on page four, if we're in here because we have a structure, and we're meeting incidental or non-incidental, and we go and do this, we will not execute that stuff on page thirteen. That appears to be intended, I don't think it makes much sense personally, but whatever, as long as it's clear, it seems clear that it is, that that is not being executed when it comes to clause one, because it specifically emulates phraseology of clause one, it basically said, you know, it's basically saying, hey, if it's not part of, excuse me, clause two, it sort of emulates what's in two, two says blah, 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 go down here to page thirteen. And at the top of thirteen, it says, only do this if I came from two. That's what it's saying. And that doesn't make much sense to me, but that's what it's saying.
So your interpretation of one is that it strictly has nothing to do with decks, patios, retaining walls?
Yes, yes, in this section.
So then, if you're building a house, you're probably invoking both one and two.
Yes, that's the problem.
Well, that's why it's not a problem. Now, that's where I'm seeing it's not as a problem, because you're going to be doing, the whole project is going to be based on whether it's incidental or non-incidental, but the specific patio, retaining walls, or whatever, regardless of the disturbance and the slope, are going to still live up to the standards that are all LID-based.
Okay, so...
So they're all going to reach this threshold of standards.
So what do we think, let's just...
Okay, can we walk through it?
Let's see what we think of what, all dead on page nineteen.
Nice theory, I think there's a flaw in it, but let's walk it through. So, we're coming down through, and we say, ah, we got a house. It either does or doesn't hit one. If it does hit one, and it does meet, and it's in our zones, it'll do this ordinance and not do the stuff about decks, because I guess we're going to do that next, in the next item here, apparently. Okay? So let's assume that we're doing that. So we're going to, we're going to be coming through and doing all of this stuff, and then we come down to two, and we say, okay, now we're talking about expansion decks, patios, it's not part of a new structure. So we know that when we went to...
It's just not part of a new structure, at least.
That's kind of where, that's where I was coming from with this.
Yeah, you said not part of a, yeah, so that's a plus.
That's what I was coming from, so...
But then it gets, I don't know what this whole but are not required to meet other requirements is.
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to put a fence around when it says shall meet requirements in section five twenty-five-two four-three, great, but what about this other stuff? It doesn't talk about the other stuff, it just keeps falling through. Do I do exclusions? Do I do levels of disturbance? And when I asked that before, you know, one of the answers, one of the retorts I got was, yeah, well, it depends on the level of disturbance. And now Tom is talking about, yeah, we will put level of disturbance there, so that does seem to mean that we're going to be doing some part of this for two.
I think two, if you were going to make it like a plant P or whatever, you know, or like the IRS does with the little arrows...
Yep.
Would have just two sections to it.
What do we do with two? What's supposed to happen when two is there?
It would have to be, it would either be part of one, it would be in conjunction with one as one project, or it wouldn't be in conjunction with one. It would either be part of one, it would be in conjunction with one as one project, or it wouldn't be in conjunction with one. If it's not in conjunction with one, then it may or may not qualify to be an incidental project, it probably wouldn't, but it, it could be big enough, you could have a huge patio that you really insist, you know, I don't know, but it would take you, channel D, you know, would take you, if you're not hitting the threshold of a non-incidental or an incidental, then you go to 5.25.2.43. But these, the thing is, there's a dual purpose for them, because any patio you put in or deck is gonna have to live up to these expectations.
That's right, that's why I think, if we look at page 13, and let's look at what Paul is proposing to change in that section, and see if we all agree that that makes sense, maybe that information will help us. Because he's taking out not part of the development of a new primary structure, or a building expansion of an existing primary structure.
That's, that's the meat and potatoes of two.
Well, the intent here is to say whether I'm coming down into here because I hit on one, or because I hit on two, either way, I'm gonna make sure that I pay attention to this stuff. So that means, like, if I'm coming in with one, and I say, oh gee, I'm hitting on one, it happens to have a deck, a retaining wall, and all of that stuff, then I'll still end up doing this stuff. And maybe I'm not gonna hit on two, because, oh, it says not part of the development of a new structure. Well, it is part of the development of a new structure, so two wouldn't hit. You know, so I mean, the bottom line is, the bottom line is, should this be executed, you know, anytime I've got decks, patios, retaining walls, et cetera, should I be doing this? And I, and I don't know.
May I, uh, make a, make a suggestion?
Can we, are we still on page 13 or?
I think if you had a house, and you were built, a new house that would come under one, I think the key phrase there is all new development, including the development of a new structure, or expansion of an existing structure, yada, yada. But if you had a house, and you had a deck, and a patio, and a retaining wall, and an accessory structure, you would follow the, the-
You'd follow one.
You'd follow one. And all of those incidental structures, that's the wrong word to use, would conform to the, to the BMPs as listed under 525-243, there, there's no issue there.
Now, you're talking two, though.
Yes, I, I am talking.
But two says, um, not part of the development of a new structure.
Yeah, you, if Kenny, Kenny sees that, that there's a house and there's a deck, he would follow the, the BMPs as, as mandated by whatever level of disturbance is triggered. And then he would also follow the dictates under decks, under, uh, 431.
Not if he, not if it says at the top of 13 that you shouldn't, because it's part of, if it's, uh-
Yeah, go to 13, I wanna just-
Part of a house.
I see the line he took out, but it doesn't say-
Let's just hash out 13 and see if, see if we can gain something from that. I feel like it's gonna be worthwhile, honestly.
Well, I'm, I'm sensing that there's some heads that are gonna explode here, so I'm, I'm cautious about proceeding too much further. But the bottom line is, you know, once intent is discerned, then we need, need to make it say what that intent is.
I mean, I think, I think taking that out of the stormwater management for decks, patio, retaining walls, and impervious surfaces, it doesn't need that phrase, this is not part of the development of a primary structure, a new structure, or building expansion.
Well, I think it prevents-
I think it's a good change on page 13.
It prevents fall-through.
I think it's a good change, but I don't think it clarifies whether patios, decks, and retaining walls are part of one.
Okay.
No, that doesn't clarify, but it gets us to the standing point where we together can say that,
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I- That we agree on that one aspect, that one aspect.
So, last-
Now we have to move through and get his section, his second part of it.
Alright, okay. The girl triggered last time, okay, that, I attempted to say, well, you know, the real trouble is trying to figure out the interrelationship of the, the one and the two. So, last time the trigger, my intent here, and, and how I, I struck out two entirely. And on one, I just got rid of the number one, and just said, this ordinance shall apply to all new developments, according to town, as permitted by the Town of Act and Land Use Chart, including development of a new structure, expansion of an existing structure, or newer expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious services, in other words, combining all of it. If it meets the threshold level, excuse me, if it meets the definition of incidental or non-incidental disturbance as delineated above, and is not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit within the following zones. And, and keep in mind, above, I had the incidental and non-incidental already defined. So, my intent was really to try to iron out this real mess of the interrelationship of those two points, and say, you know, because I think with, with part of what I heard tonight, the unspoken intent is that one includes decks and patios and retaining walls, and yet, when I put it in there, it was like, oh no, we don't want to put that in there. So, what, what are we talking about?
No, it's not that we didn't want to put it in there, it's just that it suddenly became so cumbersome. And then you completely took out the stuff that may not trigger the incidental stuff, you took out two completely, we still need two. We still need to, to, you know, to take care of the parts and pieces that get done incrementally.
I, I understand, I think now, now that we beat this thing to a pulp, that indeed, you would not go to section 4.3 if, under one, you did have a deck. Because it states, I mean, that's what the, that's why Jen wrote the clause.
4.3, yes.
And, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm happy with that.
So you're saying that's intended?
Yes, because that's the way she wrote it. She said, not part of the development of a new primary structure.
Right, right.
So this is, this is a small project that comes in after the fact that the primary structure has been built, and you're, and you're doing a, a smaller project that's delineated in two, and it states clearly in, in two, 413, 213-2, not part of the development of a new structure building. The only suggestion I would still try to, try to, uh, suggest for, for refinement or clarity, and this, this arose before, is that the notion of abandoning the consideration of level of disturbance should, should not be as you are inclined to do. I would, I would direct the applicant and the reader to still consider the, the, determining the threshold level of disturbance vis a vis what you're doing in two.
You mean even in two?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're getting there. I think we're okay with one, if we restore 13 back to the way it said, so we're very clear that when I do one, I am not doing page 13. And if that's intended-
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so-
Everybody on board with that?
We're, we're certainly not putting a burden on, on the homeowner, because we're omitting stuff if we have a house involved. We're omitting deck stuff in, in the stormwater ordinance, having to do with decks and retaining walls, if there's a house involved. And, you know, I'm sure the homeowner won't have any problem with that, but there are some protections that I think are intended that aren't happening in this case. But, anyway, so you're good on one, that, that that is gonna happen for better or worse, correct?
I don't know, I mean, don't we want them to follow these, follow these standards, no matter when they put up in a deck?
I don't know, yeah.
I think they-
That's not what it says.
They would still be considered, I would suggest, Paul.
It's not what it says.
Well, it's not what's there now, is what Paul's saying, that's why we need to get it out.
Well, I think it is-
I, I know, I don't know how to fix that, but.
Well, it states that you, number one, you, you, you have to determine the level of disturbance, and, and that you, you have to, you would have to meet the management plans that are dictated thereof.
Yep, and then we get to 13 and we bypass it.
Times, times, times. And that would impact your, your house and, and other new structures that are appended to the house. It could be a deck, or a retaining wall, or whatever, they would all have to follow LID practices.
What if the retaining wall is down the hill from the house? What if the retaining wall is part of an LID for the roof?
Well, what if, you know? What if it is?
If it's attack, not attack? Well, it's just unclear in one. Now, I was, I assumed all along, like you're assuming, that if you're taking on a project, and your project's gonna be from beginning to end, including all your landscaping, all being done in one fell swoop, it's all under one.
Yeah, and that's fine, and that's great.
That's an assumption, and it's probably not safe to assume, assume that, maybe we need to include that. But, I don't want to include that and then completely ignore the fact that this property might be being developed in stages, and that the deck or the retaining walls may be being put in later.
Without a house involved.
That, yes, and that you may not be expanding your house at the time, and that project
Why wouldn't that-
could, or could not, still trigger-
Why wouldn't that fall under two?
It would fall under two, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Well, then what's the objection?
The objection is, there's still two conditions for two. You could still be building a patio that, especially if it's a roof patio, or something that has potentially hits the 100 square additional impervious feet threshold, that's all. And in that rare instance, two should be broken into two instances. It should be the instance that sends you back to, um, non-incidental section, and there should be the instance that triggers you to go skip ahead to 243.
That was my intent in, 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 including the clause pertaining to, you know, alerting the reader that they do have to still consider the threshold level of disturbance in two by inserting the clause.
Yeah, but you're not letting them not consider it.
Uh, they, they could not consider-
You're saying that everyone has to go back-
They just have to read it and see if it's applicable. Why, what, I don't understand the burden that you're, that you're perceiving there.
Because the person is gonna be reading along, and they're gonna say, go to 5.25.2.43. So they're gonna skip, as Paul-
No, no, well, Tom, Tom wants to, that's not what Tom's saying.
I'm saying, insert the clause if it meets the, from-
Section 5.252.15.
Between the words above and shall in two, so that you are directing the reader to-
Well, and that brings up what you were saying earlier, though, is when you're talking separately between one and two, on one, do I not include the stuff having to do with what I'm gonna talk about in two? And in two, do I not include the stuff that we're gonna be talking about in one? That when you have them split out, it's unclear which
Why doesn't-
levels of disturbance are, are referred to.
Why is there such lack of clarity on the phrase in two of not part of the development of a new structure or building expansion of an existing structure? Isn't that the meat and potato of that?
It's clear that it's, that it's talking about not part of, yes.
I.e., it's not part of number one.
But when I go to one, and I do one, because one applies,
Right.
I'm not gonna be doing any kind of regulation on page 13.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
But when you do two, you might still have to fall under the regulate, under 5.1, you know, incidental disturbance, you might-
Yeah, exactly, and that's why I'm suggesting-
But it doesn't send you back there.
But we're not doing that.
But I'm suggesting that you insert that clause in there.
Putting that clause in there alone might do it, but I have to, I guess I have to see it written out, I have to, because-
Okay, in two.
Because you're dragging all projects into it. You're saying that all projects are gonna invoke-
A consideration of the level of disturbance, yes. They may or may not trigger it, and then they're, they're free just to go down to 525-243.
Okay.
All right, so we just have to write it so that that's clear, so that-
So, will we be doing incidental and non-incidental, and actually doing this stuff about management of incidental and non-incidental? Are those are gonna apply to two? I think that's a reasonable, a, a clear question with hopefully a clear answer.
Sometimes, depends on the scale of their project.
Okay, so, what if we forget about talking about freaking requirements of section 525-243 in two, and phrase it very similarly to this? Just saying, this ordinance shall apply to, okay, newer expansion or impervious surfaces, not part of the development of a new structure or building expansion of an existing structure within zones listed in ANC above, shall meet requirements, uh, skill, uh, what are we gonna do here?
If it meets the threshold level of disturbance.
Shall apply. So this, okay, so in two, it starts off, this ordinance shall apply to newer expansion of decks. So we're really gonna, sort of emulating what one is saying in two, because you want it to do the same things, right? We're not gonna specifically talk about 525-243. We're gonna let it do everything that it does in one, by hook or crook, one way or another. So we're treating them both separately, and offhand, I'm not exactly clear why it would be improper to combine them.
We are treating them both separate.
Well, you, but you, okay, we're treating them separately, but you want them still to come into exclusions, levels of the disturbance. But I don't think you're intending that they're gonna come up with two sets of paperwork. So why are we, why do we have two clauses? Because we seem to be sort of-
What, what is your, what is your-
You're bringing in new problems every time.
Yeah, what is the obje, to, what is the-
Well, every, wait, wait, every workaround produces a new problem.
What is the objection, the concise objection to inserting the phrase after the word within zones listed in ANC above, comma, if it meets the threshold level of disturbance as delineated in section 525-215, comma, shall meet requirements in section 525-243?
It might work, I have to actually sit down and-
Okay, can we, can we drop that?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do that.
I have to write it out.
Okay.
Uh, move on.
And I think we can move on, the rest of this, uh, stuff on five, we already talked about.
Okay, I'm, I've got 423B was the one that we sent off to-
Four, oh, yeah, okay.
Faris Bell, we have not gotten anything back from that yet.
Okay, 423.
And I want to raise a point that we came across over the interim period here, if I can find the damn thing.
423.
We're waiting correspondence back from, uh-
E, was that one that we had a question about? Because I, oh, because of the time factor thing?
It was on page 14, yeah, yeah. It was on page 14 in the old-
Right, and this is page 11, although, you know, that seems a little strange that, because it was only page, it was only, it was only 15 pages before, now we got 14, just the way I printed it.
Well, I, in, in correspondence, in correspondence with Faris Bell, I, I have to refer to the February 2, 12 version.
Okay, gotcha. So it had to do with the time factor that we were questioning on, on that one, supporting calculations and data on, on pre and post-development?
It's on page nine, right, it was in redevelopment?
I, I think it's on page 11, if I'm 42-
423B.
Right, so right now, it's at the, the top of page 11, Baker.
I thought you were asking, I thought you were asking, um-
We're also asking about, about the page nine thing.
Yeah.
I think there were two things.
So, we're waiting there, hopefully on Thursday, we'll get word of that one, and get some clarity on that.
Okay. Um, I crossed out the New Hampshire Stream Crossing Guide thing on page eight, while I'm, while I'm looking at that.
It's not the whole section.
On page eight? No, you were talking about taking out the impaired water body stuff on the next page. And I'm a little curious about that, I think that's the first I've heard, but, I mean, it certainly neatly sidesteps the work that it's gonna need if we leave it in, but-
Well, it doesn't really apply anymore.
No?
One, it's using the New Hampshire language, but two, the planning board's not getting involved in people's forecasts.
Okay.
I mean, it just doesn't even, that seems to be something that was put in as discretion, but when we were, it's still, to me, and I might be completely wrong, harkens back to when we were writing a, uh, an ordinance for, specifically for one watershed that encompassed two states. And now we're encompassing all our watersheds.
Well, I certainly have no objection to getting rid of it, it'll, it'll, one less bone of contention.
It's like a standalone that doesn't really say anything that we're letting them do it.
Can I, can I just get caught up to speed with you for a minute here? You, you lost me there. But there's one preceding issue that, that I think can be made clear, that we did not touch on in the September 15th draft. And you can look at the original one.
September or October?
September.
September, okay. Oh, okay.
525-215, I think this got bias.
September 15, yeah.
What, that was the disturbance?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what page it is in the original draft. I'm trying to figure out what page it is in the original draft.
Five.
Two, one, four, two, one, five, levels of disturbance, yeah.
And I'm surprised you didn't catch this, my friend. This just broke my jaw when I read this one. A disturbance of land means any time. I wouldn't, I wouldn't keep that there. I would suggest that it read, a disturbance of land is the exposure of soil, sand, gravel, or rocks by human activities.
Yeah, we already have a levels of disturbance definition. I don't know why they don't match. How come, because there's a level of disturbance definition, is it there in the dictionary?
No.
Or maybe I was, oh, no, I just, it's just disturbing.
I think it just scans better if you.
So your quibble is the phrase means any time? Is that correct?
Absolutely, that's terrible.
Well, whatever, you know.
Well, it is.
Okay, what do you propose changing it to?
A disturbance of land is the exposure of sand, gravel, or rocks by human activities such as.
Okay, hold on. So are exposed, we're going to get rid of, because that would be redundant.
Correct.
Is the exposure of?
Correct. Soil, sand, gravel, or rocks by human activities. Just a suggestion, seems to scan.
Any.
Means any time, just broke my.
Yeah, I mean, any, any, I mean, is general agreement there? I mean, I have, I have no rejection.
No.
Oh, and that gets out of there too. Means any time that is removing.
Right.
And are exposed.
Is.
So is the exposure of soil, sand, gravel, and of cour, and I'll throw a comma in after gravel, just because.
Yeah.
Or rocks.
By human.
By human activities such as, this includes me, yeah. That's, that's fine to me.
Last, last point tonight, the point that you were just talking about impaired waterways. Where's the citation?
That's in page nine, is it? Yeah.
Nine in.
Just above section four, near the bottom of page nine. The impaired water bodies are high-quality waters. We were talking about the HWQ, HQW, how do you tell, blah, blah.
We should ask Linda about that, she was the one that put it in.
That's just accidentally got left there by the, because I can't imagine what else it's running with. It doesn't go on the same thing.
What was this, I'm sorry, what was the citation?
It's the impaired water bodies are high-quality waters, which is right there.
And what's, what is the objection?
What does it do? What does it, why?
It allows the planning board to do something extra that, that.
That we don't do. We're not going to become the phosphorus.
No, it's just saying, the engineer or whoever is doing the application in an impaired water body that needs more consideration may require the phosphorus allocation work for all development within that watershed. So if you had back in.
But no, but you know, that means that if a project comes up on Nelson Lake, are we or are we not going to interfere?
We're not going to interfere at all.
Well, then why have a phrase there?
We're going to ask Kenny, what is, to call the DEP and say to, who's our friend, Wendy Garland, what is the categorization of, you know, lower Mawson, whatever the water body is?
Well, if we leave this in here, we're going to have to have some citation that shows where you would find that out. It's not going to be a call to whoever.
As determined by the main DEP.
It's going to, it's going to somehow, we're going to need to find somewhere where it explains which water bodies fit into these categories so that we're very clear.
We can reference the main DEP website if you want it, right there, if you want it to.
You'd have to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, but then why don't we just clarify and say, everybody who does a project on Mawson Lake has to go through the planning board to get their phosph, to, that all projects on Mawson Lake have to be done by phosphorus control. Because Mawson Lake is the only one that is declared by the, by the DEP to be impaired, and that singles out Mawson Lake.
I don't know that for a fact, but.
But it is a fact.
We would need to know that before this would move forward.
Well, if you look that up, but the thing is, why not just be specific on what lakes are going to be affected and whatnot?
Because it's not a constant.
What do you mean it's not a constant? It's either an impaired lake or a water body.
Well, down the line in the future.
Five years from now, they may not, or new lakes may be added.
We're just saying, go to the DEP to see.
The lake doesn't necessarily say it's not impaired, it's at risk for development.
It's, it's, it's on a watch list.
Okay, so the thing is, I don't know, to me, it's just something to read and get confused by. And plus, we'd have to change the high-water quality language.
We would, if it was left in there, we would need to be more clear about where to find that information.
The phosphorus control allocation. We're already doing that, we're already, I mean, for non-incidents.
I think the sensibility of this is, if you have, I mean, it's right there, in black and white.
It's a nice phrase to have in there. I, it may be helpful to other towns if they read this document and they come to this and it's in there, you know.
What use is it to us?
As a tool for education. People can say, oh, I can do something more here. Well, and it's also a liquid document here. The main DEP is going to say something different from year to year.
Are you giving us an argument for having something in here that could be confusing and can give the more responsibility?
Well, I'm not trying to make an argument, I'm trying to make a discussion.
The reason, the sensibility for leaving it in there is that it triggers a higher threshold of care for that water body, which, which is.
Which would be which water body?
Whatever the main DEP tells you it is.
That won't fly.
I'm just, I'm not seeing logic there.
The paragraph can stay there if the board so chooses, but we're going to need to be more clear about how to find that information. When making citations, when we refer to state documentation or state guidelines, we need to say, this is where you can find it.
As determined by the, by the current designation by the main DEP website.
Okay, so how do you get to the website? Where is it? You know, I mean.
Well, there's other references that refer to the DEP forms and websites and such that we don't provide all those forms for them.
True.
I'd say the titles are effective, remove them.
Yeah, okay, well, we should look at this for next time and we'll, right, and we'll make a decision.
I mean.
Evidently, we don't all.
Well, see, that could, that could maybe sink or swim in the next phase when we're actually doing these citations, you know, the footnotes about, you know, when we're talking about LID this and state document that, you know, where is this located? You know, how does it affect us? You know, how easy would it be to clarify it a little bit about what it really means? And, okay, I'm a homeowner on such and such a body of water, does it affect me? If I don't know how to find the information or the phone number for Joe Blow at the, at the some state department somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean, is there, is the CEO going to be handing out a piece of paper that explains what is needed?
It's essentially setting a court zone with another, with its own set of extra credentials. So.
Past dessert.
I just think it's a.
It does.
Getting past dessert.
It's shoreland, but, oh, but it's impaired, so now, so now what? So now if you're going to.
Well, there's no impaired water bodies in the town, so we can take it out, is that what you're saying? I understand what you're saying.
The paragraph doesn't seem to have a beginning or an end or really a place in the ordinance.
Okay, then we ought to re-read.
We will look at that for next time.
Okay.
The one right above it, the one that we had a little bit of a disagreement about last time? I added one word. If an asphalt maintenance project requires substantially removing coarse gravel or other materials, blah, blah, blah. And to me, that's better because it puts the burden on the town. If the town wants to require something to happen under this clause, then the burden of proof on the town is to prove that we're substantially removing the base of the road, as opposed to maybe scraping off an inch or whatever while I'm going along removing paving. That's basically the long and the short of it. It doesn't make it more specific, but it does sort of change the semi-arbitrary cutoff point from anything removed to substantially, whatever the heck that is, removing the base.
Paul just used the word disturbed, but anyway. And he said that, I don't know, he said asphalt maintenance, you know, what is asphalt? He said, well, what is asphalt maintenance?
We could look at this other.
Asphalt maintenance, asphalt replacement.
I don't know, yeah.
You know, that's why I came up with a different sentence.
Oh, yeah, and.
Yeah, we could look at that.
Where is the, right. Asphalt replacement project, okay, so that's a little more clear, I think, requires disturbing materials. Disturbing materials forming the base. So any of those layers under there could be materials under the base, and arguably, I'm going to be disturbing them almost no matter what I do unless I can magically.
They're going to be compacting them before you put your new surface on.
Unless I can magically remove the paving without touching anything underneath, and I agree that you're going to somehow have to prep them, you're going to disturb them, does that always trigger this thing? And that's why I said substantially, just to make very clear that we're talking about more than just your incidental disturbance of the, of the base as you're removing paving and replacing it.
I could work with that.
So I, you know, I like that better. There's still some potential flaws, but at least I think the effect here is putting the burden more on the town than on the homeowner on that clause.
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about middle of page nine.
The one you wrote?
The one I wrote, actually. Because I think this one is going to be a very similar problem with interpretation. Disturbing materials forming the base under the asphalt. Disturbing, well, how can I not disturb them when I pull that, the paving off?
Precisely.
Well, if that, what we mean is whenever you remove paving, you have to replace it with, you know, whatever, then don't talk about the base, just say, that's what you need to do.
That would have been better to even say just what you just said.
Well, if that's the intent of the, of the board, then it should say that.
We could make it say that.
Well, feel free, but then it's very clear what it means.
What did you just say?
Well, it hasn't, don't talk about the base. Just say, if you remove paving, you've got to replace it with impervious, you know, impervium, impervious paving or porous, porous paving.
And the original said.
Which was what I, if I wanted to say, I agree, because that's what I want to say in the first place.
And, you know, I'm not, I'm not passing judgment on.
You're not replacing the asphalt necessarily. Someone might be wanting to put grass on pavers above it. Someone might not even want to park on it. It might be being turned into something.
Oh, sure. Well, if it's, if it's being, if it's, if it's being.
Well, there wouldn't be a maintenance project.
If it's being removed and is to be.
It would be asphalt removal, right, right, okay.
If it is being removed and is to be replaced with paving.
I like the replacement.
Blah, blah, blah. So, and I'm not making judgment as to, you know, and I, and I agree that this is more, you know, this, in more cases, will require you to use impervious paving, or, excuse me, pervious paving. But at least it's clear in what it's requiring. That's kind of the point, that whatever it's going to say, whatever you intended to say, make it clear under what, under what circumstances it's going to happen.
Then can we fly with, in an asphalt replacement project?
Yeah.
Requires substantially.
Well, if an, okay, if an asphalt replacement, okay.
Requires, I'm, I'm.
Well, how about asphalt replacement projects require replacing, using LID practices? I mean, do you want to be as, as black and white as that?
No, I like, I like your term substantially, and I like the replacement. So it would scan, if an asphalt replacement project requires substantially removing coarse gravel on, to the end, as existed.
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay, so instead of maintenance, we're talking replacement.
Yeah.
And substantially.
But then, then I don't like, then the asphalt shall be replaced because it's not, I mean, unless this is something that's going, just, are you taking a parking lot and keeping it as a parking lot, then the asphalt might not be replaced. Or the asphalt might be permeable, porous concrete, or the asphalt might be pavers with grass.
Well, that's why this says replacement, if an asphalt replacement project.
Well, the asphalt will be replaced.
Well, then you need something else.
If it's not a replacement project, then this doesn't apply.
I, I got hung up on that at the very, very end, just before I came down here and tried to change it, but.
Well, I don't want to have replaced in there twice ideally, but it's okay, we don't mind.
Well, it's the asphalt part, but that's, you know, it's okay, they'll know what you're talking about. I mean, you're not replacing the asphalt.
If you're not replacing the asphalt, then it's not a replacement project, and this won't apply.
Right, okay, so it's asphalt. That's fine, that's good. I agree. Keep it, just put that word replacement in and keep the word substantially.
Okay, so replacement and substantially.
So for, for.
Hey, we got something done today.
To-do list, we're going to go through this thing and try to be more concise with our citations wherever necessary.
Yeah, which means we're looking at the state language and figuring out where this stuff's going to come from. Keep in mind that when I printed this, in order to kind of save paper, I didn't use, and I just found out about this today or tonight, looking at this, I don't see any footnotes here, but the original document has them in some cases.
Yeah, I just have to figure out how to convert that document.
They weren't carried along.
If I printed them using Word, I, I printed it using Wordpad.
It's a margin thing. I don't know how to take the comment margin out.
Okay.
If I could figure out how to take the comment margin out.
But if I, if I do this.
So if they're all in this one.
It's going to use more paper.
They're in this one.
Yeah, because, but that's, I don't think I printed that one.
Yeah, no, you shouldn't be pricking this much. I mean, we should be getting a bill for all the papers.
So.
You really should, because I couldn't afford to.
Has our discussion about the lovely triggering mechanism.
Oh, that's gone.
I mean, I'd like to take another shot at it if I understood what the intent is, and I still don't.
Well, I.
Call it ignorance, but, you know, relieve my ignorance here. What is this supposed to mean?
For applicability, every kind of project permutation has to be taken care of in that one under applicability. Every project has to somehow be covered.
Okay.
That is what we know.
Is there, is there a reason why the trigger thing was bad? Or was I just jumping to conclusions?
I don't know what you're talking about, trigger thing.
You're just going back to October eighth.
Look up, yeah, look up applicability here.
Where he, he.
Where?
Here, trigger, last, last time?
That's it, yeah, it's just a couple pages.
Okay, yes.
I don't like words like trigger and invoke and stuff like that.
It's just what he wrote at the top of the thing.
We just haven't had a chance yet.
Okay.
If I may paraphrase, he, Paul, put levels of disturbance before applicability.
I like that idea.
Well, and, and I'm not married to that, that isn't, that is not the key part, I mean, the key part of what I'm talking about is just that one paragraph, applicability, under applicability, that's the only thing. I mean, the rest of that, if you don't like it in front of, and you want to put it after, like it is in the current document, I'm good with that, it's not.
I thought we, we had some traction on applicability, you're going.
We don't.
Yeah, we do.
Well, well, nobody's.
Because I'm going to go home and like not.
Yeah, okay, so, under applicability, is that what is intended? How about if we just can ask that question to have everybody look at that thing, call it a trigger, call it whatever you want, but the applicability paragraph from trigger, draft one, October eighth?
Right.
Is that, in fact...
Where's the word trigger?
Handwritten right there.
Put it on top.
Oh, I thought you were talking...
He's just talking about October eighth.
This whole thing is intended to be the triggering mechanism.
But I think, I think in that, just briefly, an applicability where...
Well, we're including it in one.
If it meets the definition.
That's a train wreck.
And sometimes, sometimes it's not...
I believe you said that last time, too.
I did, it's a good quote.
And that's kind of where I got the impression that it wasn't flying.
Yeah.
So, somehow, okay, somehow, we need to figure out what's supposed to happen when. And I can't really come up with another version of this, because I don't understand what's supposed to happen when. So, can anybody write out longhand what's, which of these things is supposed to happen under what circumstances? Then we can craft logic to make that happen.
I started to, a few minutes ago.
May I suggest that you, you write out...
I know what you mean.
Yeah, just write that out and, and look at it and see if it makes sense when it's plugged into two, between the word above and shall.
Oh, you're talking about the clause that goes down?
It's nine.
Well, that creates additional problems, which, of course, we'll discuss at a later time.
Well, not too much later, because we can't, I'm about, run out of traction on applicability. I'm not going to be applying anymore yet.
Have you been?
I have been.
Oh, okay.
Exceedingly.
All right.
It's nine o'clock.
Yeah, we're going to adjourn. Let's just quickly go over our to-do list, check citations. We're going to pull together the three notions of Paul's, Jess's, and Tom's notion of just pacing together the two sentences that pertain to impervious cover with the improvements that we've looked at tonight. Number three was nail down that applicability section, and hopefully, we can dispense with it on the twenty-nine.
That would be awesome.